We'll call it. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This is the Wednesday, March nine, two thousand and twenty-two town of Andover special Board of Finance meeting to talk about the the budget. Start by calling to order reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, if we would. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. The second item on our agenda is public speak, so we would invite members of the public to speak. I do want to add that we, one of our agenda items tonight is the RAM presentation by Scott Leslie on the RAM Region Eight Board of Education budget. Just as a reminder, this budget does not get incorporated into the town's budget. This is a separate issue, so this is more of a courtesy visit. I think by by Scott helping inform the town and the the Board of Finance as to their budget approach, strategy, etc. So we would be much better if you have comment about the RAM budget to save that for RAM budget meetings separately, I think. But they don't want to prevent anyone from speaking, but I would ask that you keep it on topic and to the point if we do have any comments on that. So that being said, Amanda, do you want to open it up for public speak, please?
Sure. Okay, so first we have Mr. Shevchenko.
Sorry, I I guess I accidentally put my put my hand up. I don't have anything.
We just usually do a round rod and check with everybody.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, thank you. Well, then I'll say that I'm here representing the RAM Board of Ed from the town of Andover. And I am formerly on the end was formerly on the Andover Board of Finance for for budget seasons. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Eva Galup.
Hi, I'm Eva Gallup. I'm the School Business Manager for Regional School District Eight. I'm here to support Mr. Leslie and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Judy Benson Clark.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm also from the RAM Board of Education and because it's the greater community, I've attended all three Board of Finance meetings and I reside in Marlboro.
Thank you. Okay, we're all set.
Okay, everybody. All right, very good. So it sounds like no further public comment. So I guess at that point, we'll turn it over to Mr. Leslie. Amanda, can you give him control so he could do a presentation?
Go ahead, Scott. You're all set.
Great. Thank you, Amanda and Mark. Thank you very much. And on behalf of the entire RAM community, thank you for welcoming us this evening and giving us an opportunity to share our budget process where it is. And you've already met, but we have Eva Gallup here, who is our business manager, and she and I will be happy to answer any questions. I'm very pleased also to have Eric Shevchenko representing Andover and Judy Benson Clark from Marlboro. So welcome our two RAM Board members. The the one thing I want to stress before I begin the presentation is to highlight the fact that this is still a work in progress. So this is, the budget has not been adopted by the RAM Board of Education. They still have at least two meetings in which they will have an opportunity to continue to review and possibly modify the budget that you'll be seeing this evening. If you go on the RAM website, you'll see that there are a series of budget books. And what I've been doing is updating the budget book each time the RAM Board has made any modifications to the budget. And and certainly what I'm presenting to you this evening will reflect all the latest updates. And again, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. So I'll start sharing my screen.
I have shared this presentation. Scott sent it to me this morning, a long workday, but I sent it on to the other members of the Board of Finance as well.
Great.
Amanda, I didn't send it to you, but I'm happy to do so, or I'm sure you had it from Scott.
Great. And again, if you go to the RAM website, there's a budget icon on any of the three websites, the district website or either the middle or the high school. And that includes all of our budget documents as well. So hopefully, everything is is easily accessible for for everybody. So I, those of you that have seen any of my presentations, you've seen this slide. Eric and Judy and Eva have certainly seen it many, 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 many times. And I include it just to focus on the concept that before we even start building the budget, we certainly reference our district strategic plan, and we want to make sure that the budget that I'm presenting to the board for consideration reflects our mission, our vision, and our theory of action. Some of the the more specific items within that plan, developing a fiscally efficient and accountable budget that maximizes resources, providing a welcoming, accepting, well-maintained, accessible, and safe facilities in school, offering a globally competitive world-class education for all of our students, hiring, training, and retaining high-quality professional staff, and engaging the community through active outreach and ongoing communication. In terms of the the goals that our budget reflects, all students in Region Eight will have access to and actively engage in a variety of learning opportunities, experiencing growth developments, developing skills, competencies, and dispositions, developing a professional staff to promote our positive school climate, develop budgets that address the declining enrollment of the district and that are fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of the school, towns, and the state, develop and influence strategies to enhance and further develop a culture of safety, acceptance, pride, and support with students, families, staff, and community members, and enhance our facilities in order to support innovative and fully accessible teaching, learning, and extracurricular opportunities. The timeline for where we have have been and where we still have to go, as you can see, I actually, what's not on this list is I provided the board with a overview of what I would be presenting at our December twentieth Board meeting, but then did my formal presentation of my proposed budget at our January twenty-fourth Board of Ed meeting. We've had, as you can see, a number of budget workshops. We held a public budget forum at our last regular Board meeting on February twenty-eighth, followed by our regular Board meeting. Looking forward, the RAM Board is meeting on March twenty-first for their regular Board meeting. So they will have an opportunity to continue to review the budget at that meeting. And then on April fourth, we'll hold another public budget hearing, followed by a special Board of Ed meeting, where the Board will have one last chance to make any modifications to the budget, and it's the April fourth evening that the RAM Board will adopt, formally adopt, the budget, and it will now be the RAM Board's budget. And we need to hit that date so that we've met all the legal requirements to go to the Budget Referendum on May third. As you can see, we've presented to the Marlboro Board of Finance in February. Last night, we presented to the Hebron Board of Finance. We're happy to be joining Andover this evening. And Marlboro has reached out to us, and because we met with them so early in the process, they've asked us to return to give them an update of where the budget is at this point. One of them, I'm I'm sure many of you have seen this this slide. And I think it's it's most useful as as a comparison piece. The the state of Connecticut calculates a per pupil cost for East District. These represent the eight secondary regional districts within the state. And as you can see, Region Eight has the lowest per pupil cost of all of those districts. And I think with that, I I use this slide to show that I I believe that our community is is getting a very strong return on the investment that they make in the RAM schools. In terms of enrollment.
Sorry to interrupt you. Could you just clarify with the rank? Is there your, is it rank per pupil spending, just to be clear?
Correct. Yes, that's cost per pupil. So we're ninety-fourth out of one hundred and sixty-six.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Terms of our enrollment projections, we we do use the New England School Development Council or NESDEC to provide our predictive enrollment data. We anticipate that the district will be seeing one hundred and sixty-one fewer students over the next five years. Looking, moving from this current school year into the the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year, this is the one year where we have a a more modest decrease. We're anticipating five fewer students at the middle school next year and twenty-one at the high school. I do want to point out, though, that we are seeing a steady increase of students returning from technical Voag and Magnet Schools since the beginning of this school year. We had thirteen students who have returned to RAM from one of those schools. And then this gives you a an overview of what the prediction for enrollment changes are over the next few years. If you look at the middle school, the middle school will continue to decrease for the next three years. So they'll have a after next year going into twenty-two, twenty-three, they'll have a decrease of twenty students, then a decrease of thirteen students in twenty-five, twenty-six. It it levels out pretty much. They're only seeing a decrease of one student. And then they start to build enrollment beginning in twenty-six, twenty-seven. The high school is on a different timeframe, as you can see, and we anticipate that the high school will be seeing a reduction enrollment at least through twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and that reduction is going to be on the average of about thirty students a year. In twenty-eight, twenty-nine, they'll start to see a recovery. But as you can see, for the foreseeable future, particularly at the high school, there is a continued decrease in enrollment.
And you're referring to columns that are seven dash eight and then nine dash twelve on the right side.
Yes, so seven dash eight is references the grades. So that's the middle school and nine through twelve would be the high school. The that middle column, seven through twelve, represents both schools together. But you know, here a good example of where it's important to look at at each school separately here, because while the high school is still decreasing enrollment, you know, the middle school will start to see a bit of a rebound beforehand. And to, you know, I think it's important that communities understand that we have been responsive to the decrease in enrollment. And since two thousand and eighteen, we've eliminated sixteen teaching positions as we reshuffle our teaching staff to better meet the needs of the lower enrollments that we're facing. We were up at at the highest a few years. We were twelve hundred students. You know, at this point, we're in the eight hundred. So we certainly have seen a decrease. And that's reflective of that in terms of our staffing numbers. Some of the proposed improvements, and then I'll focus on some of the reductions that I'm proposing. We have, I've got a point four health PE teacher. Now, point four is is out of a full-time, so point four would be a little less than a half-time teacher. And the reason for adding this to the budget is the fact that we're seeing and a significant increase in interest in the wellness area from our students. And I, we all believe that at least partly that's due to the pandemic and the need to focus on on some things that students can do to to kind of increase their own positivity. Also, though, the state has mandated new graduation requirements which require additional credits in PE and health. So there's a, there are more students that have to take those courses in order to graduate. The next two bullets, the seven periods of academic labs at the middle school and the one period of academic labs at the high school, these are not full positions. Those are seven periods. So these would be stipends of about a thousand dollars apiece that essentially allow us to assign a teacher a much more structured study hall. So we're in a study hall, teachers simply monitor the twenty or so students that have that period. In an academic lab, we're looking at a much smaller number of students, and they're receiving very specific assistance from the teachers. The teachers contact, you know, are in contact with the students' parents. And these are obviously for students that are struggling a bit more academically than others. And we have found that as we are coming out of the pandemic, we were, we have found a greater need for more intensive academic support for our students. And so that's why those are there. You'll notice there's seven in the middle school, not only one in the high school. The reason for that is we have had academic labs at the high school for a number of years where we haven't had them at the middle school. So we're we're actually kind of adding one academic lab per period at the middle school. Where at the high school, we're just supplementing what we already have. The two study hall monitors at the high school go hand in hand with those academic labs in that in order to free up teachers to oversee those academic labs, we have to take them out of what is the most typical duty for a high school teacher, which is monitoring a study hall. So by hiring some monitors just to oversee the study halls, it frees up those teachers so they can focus on the academic labs. Those four bullets, those first four bullets I just described, those up through this year have been supported by our ESER grant. I am proposing to the board that these be moved into the operating budget since our ESER grant has run out, and we've utilized all the grants that we received. I would anticipate that the point four health teacher would probably go for more than just next year, whereas the academic labs and the study hall monitors, I would anticipate would just be a one-year investment. And then as we are one more year out of the pandemic, there'll be less need for those more intensive academic assistance. The three paraprofessionals at the high school are specific to special education needs and are there because we have identified students that require additional support. The these next two, the nurses administrative assistants, again, this is not a full-time position. A point six, seven FTE is just a little bit more than a half-time administrative assistant. This was actually a position that we budgeted in our operating budget through the end of last year, and we're anticipating that we were going to be able to eliminate it moving forward. However, as you can imagine, throughout the pandemic, the nurse's office has become one of the busiest hubs within our building, particularly this year. And we found that we really needed that position to help manage the traffic coming in and out of the nurse's offices. So we did fund it this year through the ESER grants as well. I'm proposing that we fund it for one additional year next year through the operating budget. Again, partly because we're not exactly sure what we're going to be looking at next year, but we do anticipate that the nurse's office will continue to be a busier spot. And then we're hopeful that the following year, we'd be able to to finally eliminate it altogether. The school counseling team leadership stipend, again, this is not a full-time position. This is a a small stipend that allows one of our school counselors in the middle school to take on a leadership role to help organize and focus the counseling support that we offer to our middle school students. We have two counselors that serve as department coordinators, but they're both seated in the high school. And so we really felt we needed somebody to help coordinate the services that we're providing to our students at the middle school a little more closely. In terms of two positions that I'm proposing, we remove. One is we have a a halftime, a point five district technology service technician that has been in the budget for a couple of years. We simply have not been able to fill it. We haven't had any qualified candidates to fill that position. We have an IT, a full-time IT director. We do have a full-time district technology technician. And we've been able to free up one of our teachers a couple of periods each day who has extensive tech, a sense of technology background. And we are confident that we can meet the technology needs of our schools without that position. So combining the fact that we really cannot, we haven't been able to fill it, and we're getting by just fine without it. I'm suggesting that we eliminate it. The English teacher, as you see, I I've got it indicated that it's grant-funded. This was a position that I cut from the budget last year. Here again, when the pandemic hit, we realized that our students had taken a hit on some of the writing and and reading skills that we felt had fallen a little behind for some of our students. We wanted to provide some smaller class sizes for those students with the greatest need. And so we did use the ESER grant to fund this position. We are eliminating it going into next year. So this is not a reduction from the operating budget. It's not coming out of the operating budget, being that it's grant-funded by did want to highlight that it is a position that we are eliminating and won't be returned to the operating budget. In terms of some of the driving factors for the budget, in the area of technology, the, we have a number of of software packages that and as you can see, these do a variety of tasks for us. So example, the Smart Notes is an instructional tool for our math department, whereas JAMF is a centralized platform that helps us manage the Apple products in the building, and that's primarily the Apple computers in the arts area of our programming. The Duo MFA is a firewall add-on, which is a security program that, as you can imagine, with such a large wireless system, we, you know, security is is really key for us. Schoology is a instructional platform that allows teachers to organize their classes, because you know, certainly, we were digitally based prior to the pandemic. Any teacher that that hadn't moved into that realm before the pandemic certainly has now. So you know, the vast majority of the organization of our instructional tools are digitally based. So that's a platform to support teachers in their instruction, and then Google Enterprise as well supports instruction. In terms of the hardware, if you take a look at the the budget book, you'll notice that I I've got highlighted our leasing agreements for for a number of years. And what it shows is that about five years ago, the RAM Board embarked on a plan to to hit a set amount each year for our leasing responsibility so that those costs didn't jump and fall each year. And the what we, the goal was to hit sixty thousand a year, because that's, that covers all that we need. So if you look at our budget, you'd see that the twenty-one, twenty-two lease amount was forty thousand, whereas the other years have been sixty. This is the last year of moving that up. And so we anticipate moving forward that that number, that sixty thousand number, wouldn't change from year to year at this point. Some of the, what that's funding this, this coming near the twenty-two, twenty-three is we do need to replace the seventh and tenth grade Chromebooks. Those are due for replacement. And when we moved into the building in two thousand and three, each of our classrooms was fitted with a smartboard and a projector which provided an interactive board at the front of the room. Two thousand and twenty-two, many of those smartboards have failed, or the the projectors have failed, or we can't find bulbs for the projectors. And so we're replacing those with interactive LCD panels, which are less expensive overall and certainly much more efficient. In the area of special ed, we have, we we do have some increases in our Magnet School tuition in terms of having to cover the Magnet School tuition for some of our special needs students. In the second bullet, we highlight the specific students that we are aware of that will either be entering our district or that will be experiencing a change in programming that will move them into a more costly program. And then the third bullet, we've had an increase to our assessment supplies for special education. And what we found with as a, as a result of the pandemic, we have more students that had been referred to special ed. And so we're finding that we're doing a greater number of assessments. And so this is there to support our special ed staff as they move through that. In terms of our facilities, we will, we do have, I think, as many of you know, a separate capital budget. In terms of the operating budget, we have an HVAC repair and maintenance software upgrade that we're we're due for, and that's covered in here for about the twelve thousand dollars. Ever sources is telling us we should be planning for an increase of approximately ninety-five thousand dollars for our electric delivery fee increase. We do have some maintenance equipment that needs to be replaced. The washer and dryer in the middle school PE department, an acid flame cabinet for the high school science department, the soundboard in the auditorium, and outdoor AED enclosures for athletics. We have we have a number of AED cabinets within our building. And we have AEDs that are specific for our field areas. The problem is, is that we don't have the encasements to to protect them, and so that they tend to be placed into supply boxes that are not accessible to the general public or easily accessible if there's an emergency outside. So we're proposing the addition of three outside AED enclosures that would allow us to make sure that AEDs are available both inside and outside of the building twenty-four, seven. We're anticipating a five thousand dollar increase in our natural, natural gas supply. And the last one, the security repair and maintenance, this is adding a remote door access to one of the the main corridors within the building. If you, if you're coming into RAM through the main entrance of the high school, not the auditorium entrance, but the entrance on the Wall Street side of the facility, right on the outside next to the library is a entranceway into the English hallway and the math stairway. That doesn't have a a key fob to allow access. And what we find is that particularly over the last couple of years, we have a lot of classes that are moving outside in the spring and the fall. And we really want to avoid anybody propping a door open or being enticed to proper door open. And so the additional key fob would allow us to enhance the security and make sure that teachers are able to use that entrance throughout the school day without compromising our security and allows us to continue to keep our doors locked at all times.
Kind of curious about the electric budget. Just what percentage of increase is that reflected? That ninety-five K, you know?
I don't, Eva, do you know that, the answer to that?
Not off the top of my head, but let me look in while you are, you keep going there.
Perfect. And we have another slide that catches up, so maybe even I will come together when that slide comes in a little bit. In terms of the, so I I think most of you know that that RAM, the RAM's budget is now bifurcated. We have the operating budget and the capital budget as a separate budget. The capital budget last year was two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The RAM Board has, you know, the goal has been to very much like our leasing payments, find a, an amount for the capital budget that would remain static and wouldn't change from year to year. So you wouldn't see big increases or either or big decreases in it. And the five hundred thousand mark was the the number they were shooting for. What we have in this year's capital budget is the replacement of the vinyl sheeting flooring in our kitchen, which serves both the high school and the middle school. Unfortunately, that vinyl sheet flooring is coming up at the seams and creating both a tripping hazard and a safety hazard with food getting caught underneath there. Kind of in conjunction with that, some of our walk-in coolers and freezers, the seals are are breaking. They've got sagging ceiling panels, and they really need to be replaced as well. You really need to do those together, because you need to remove the walk-in coolers, put the floors in, and then put the new walk-in coolers on top of that. When we do our health, when the health department does their inspections each year, we we, we get by with flying colors. The only two areas that we get dinged on are the the floor and the condition of the coolers. The next two items are re caulking of the joints along the foundation and the control joints. And then the foundation and window caulking for both of the buildings. They're both due for this to make sure that we're, you know, preventing any moisture from seeping into the building. You'll notice that even though the middle school is smaller, it has a higher cost. The high school comes in at fifty-seven thousand, whereas the middle school comes in at sixty-seven thousand. The reason for that is some of the caulking in the middle school is from the original structure from nineteen eighty-three. And they're concerned that there may be PCBs in the cock. So there's going to be some mitigation efforts required for that job that aren't, that will not be required at the high school. The retention pond, this is the retention pond, which sits just below the middle school baseball field. Kind of between the middle school baseball field and Route eighty-five. This is the pond that all the water from the high school athletic fields and the parking lots in that section of the the facility empties into. And then there's a spillway which prevents silt from going into Jeremy Brook, which is just behind us. The retention pond has has overgrown and and really needs to be cleaned out at this point. And the spillway has has shifted so that it it no longer does an adequate job of filter, of filtering the silt out from Jeremy Brook. So so both of those need to be attended to. And unfortunately, I think any of you that have seen RAM budgets before, you've you've seen sidewalk repair and curving repairs in each budget. We do, we've done a lot of work here, but we still have some concrete around the facility that needs to be replaced. And so that covers that. So that's, that's the items that I'm proposing are covered in this year's capital budget.
So I have the answer to that question. It's almost about a twenty percent increase. It's just a little over nineteen.
Okay, thanks very much.
So in in terms of the budget overview, I'm, I'm gonna, I have separate slides for a number of these items. But I think, you know, probably the the most important ones to look at on this particular slide. If you look at the second to last row where it says other eight hundreds, this reflects the decrease in the the bond payments, the principal and interest for the high school and middle school building project. We are experiencing a one point four million dollar reduction in our bond payments this year. It will, it will remain static at about a million dollars for the next two years. It'll drop another six hundred thousand dollars three years from now. And then we'll stay at four hundred thousand for three years, at which point it will be paid off. But you know, there is a significant decrease there. If you look up at the salary line item, you'll see that there's a significant increase there. And that wasn't done by accident. The RAM board purposely wanted to coordinate some of the initial expenses that we knew that we were, we were going to have. And and what we, one of the, well, we negotiated most of our contracts this year. For the RAM teachers, the, we negotiated a three-year contract. And, you know, I I think it's kind of a remarkable contract in, when I tell you that there was no percentage increase given to the teachers. So if you look at the, the RAM contract from this year and over the next three years, you'll see that there's no increases in the amount appointed to each of those steps, with the exception of those teachers who are at the top step, step thirteen. They'll receive a one point five percent increase each year. And the logic of that was that one of the things we found that was dramatically different with the RAM contract, say compared to Andover, Marlboro and Hebron and surrounding schools is that one, RAM teachers, you know, tended to be paid less than our surrounding districts. Any comparisons, the RAM was was in the lower part of that. One of the challenges that we have, though, is whereas particularly Marlboro and Hebron, the vast majority of their teaching staff is at the top of the salary step. So they have very little step increase each year. Whereas the RAM staff tends to be much younger, so there's a significant step increase each year. And so one of the things that the RAM board had done in previous years was freeze teachers at a particular step. So there would be a percentage increase awarded each year. But many teachers would be frozen at a particular step for a number of years. And what that resulted in was even though, say, compared to Hebron, Hebron has thirteen steps and RAM has thirteen steps. Because Hebron has never frozen their contract, it takes thirteen years for a Hebron teacher to make it to the top step. Whereas at RAM, it takes on average twenty years to make it to the top step because of all the frozen steps. The RAM board also, in the last contract negotiations, collapsed the number of steps in the RAM contract from eighteen to thirteen. Most districts have anywhere from ten to thirteen steps, eighteen was extreme. And so by collapsing those districts, it it did increase the amount you're moving from one step to another. So although it's, it's, you know, for the first year was a hefty amount, we did not add any percentage increase. We're just simply making sure that we're moving each teacher up the steps for the next three years. The non-certified staff, which includes our custodians, our paraprofessionals, our secretaries, they unfortunately also were really at the the very lowest end of the pay scale compared to all of the the districts that we compare to, including the local districts. And this is the first year of that contract. That bargaining unit received a two and a half percent increase, but they also received a fifty cent per hour differential. Next year, they'll receive a two and a half percent, I'm sorry, two percent increase, two percent increase. But they'll receive a dollar differential per hour. And then in the third year, there's no differential paid. They just have a two and a half percent increase. But we, we wanted to coordinate some of those increases with next year, knowing that we we had the decrease in the principal and interest. Going to move to the next slide because I'll, I'll talk about some of those other line items in a little more detail. So for our, you know, a lot of this is showing where we've been able to experience some savings. Our purchase services, transportation, which includes getting students to and from school, our special ed transportation or transportation to the Voag schools, our athletics, transportation, our printing and binding, electric repair and maintenance and custodial temps. We're able to reduce that portion of our budget by seventy-six thousand dollars. Most of that savings came from our three custodial temps. We've had three custodial temps budgeted for the last couple of years. And those have been critical during the pandemic, when, as you can imagine, we've had, you know, high absences. And so that allowed us to to make sure that we had enough custodial staff to ensure the cleanliness of the building. Now that we're, you know, beyond the pandemic, we no longer need those. So that we've removed those three custodial temps from the budget. We did increase one, add one custodian to the crew, but we did re-eliminate the three custodial temps. In terms of the tuition that we're paying, and most of this is special ed, but also some to our Voag tuition, we're able to experience the savings of about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. For supplies, you know, unfortunately, this is an increase. And electricity, as you can see, is is the the most significant driving factor here. Diesel fuel as well. We have both Andover and Marlboro locked in. So we're with you on on that locked in amount. One of the towns has not locked in. So we did increase the amount that we budgeted for that to make sure that we're we're covered in that area. Our career and technical education department, which includes manufacturing, engineering, computer tech. You know, we, we, we haven't been as hands-on over the last couple of years. So we haven't had to buy as much wood, as much metal. Moving into next year, when we're fully back hands-on, you know, we we did need to supplement some of the supplies that they a little more than they would typically buy to refresh those supplies. In terms of property, we've held off on the purchase of equipment in art, science, PE and CTE. Those are the departments that tend to have the heaviest equipment budgets. In our security area, our tech, our IT department and furniture, you know, we, we, we have what we need. We're not cutting anything that's essential, but we we didn't feel that we needed to add anything in those areas. So there's a reduction in there. And then, as I indicated earlier, the principal and interest from the school bonding sees the a significant decrease. The, as I indicated, the budget is still a work in progress. And at the February twenty-eighth board meeting, the RAM board did vote to add a new position of full-time family and consumer science teacher, which would cover foods and early childhood education. This reflects the anticipated cost of what a hiring a full-time teacher would be and the cost for supplies and equipment, repairs and maintenance, I should say, for that program. We, even I also worked with the board to look at some items that we could remove from the proposed budget and pre-purchase with current funds. So for example, in our kitchen, we have a steamer that was original with a bit, with a building. And we have portable refrigerators that were original with the building. The steamer has failed and is is not repairable at this point. That needs to be replaced. And in a modern school kitchen, the steamer is is one of the key tools they need. The portable refrigerators, we have a number of them and our goal is to replace at least one at one each year as they are beginning to fail. And then we have the labor. So we're, we're purchasing at the amount of forty thousand, nine hundred dollars, those items from the current budget. And then from our capital budget, we reduced it by seventeen thousand, four hundred ninety dollars. In our fire damper inspection, there were twenty-four fire damper actuators that were found to be not working. And so we're, we're replacing those now with current funds. So we're able to take that out of the capital budget. This, um, this gives you an overview of the operating budget. If we look at the operating budget on its own, it equates to a decrease of one point four seven percent. When we calculate in our anticipated revenue, which includes excess cost from the state and then, you know, tuition, our parking fee that students pay, this sort of thing. The, the decrease ends up being a negative one point three five percent. I'm gonna skip the town levies. I know that's the one thing you probably want to look at the most, but I have slides dedicated to that. So we'll look at that in in some more detail in a few slides. With the capital budget, as I indicated, we had gone from the two hundred ninety-nine thousand and five hundred dollars to the five hundred and four thousand, which is an increase of a little over sixty-eight percent. And then when you put both of those budgets together, it equates to a decrease of a negative point six, seven percent. And we'll look at the, the town levy. So for for Andover, if we just look at the operating budget, you'd have a decrease of two hundred nineteen, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. As we indicated, there is an increase in the capital improvement budget, which chips away thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars from that, which at the end of the day, results in a levy payment of a reduction of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars compared to last year's last year's budget or levy payments. In addition, the auditors provided the RAM board at the February twenty-eighth meeting with an overview of the surplus from twenty twenty-one. And I'll talk about that, the the entire surplus in just a little bit. But the surplus in excess of two percent came to forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. So Andover will be receiving eight hun- eight thousand, sixteen dollars returned from from that portion of the surplus. In looking at the rest of the surplus, but also some additional capital budget items, one of the things that you'll notice I haven't talked about or haven't mentioned is any of the repairs to the athletic fields. The capital budget I'm proposing really is focusing on critical, just building capital projects that need to be completed. Right now, this slide kind of lays out all of the potential capital money that the board has at its disposal. The five hundred and four, six nineteen reflects the proposed capital budget for next year. The board currently has two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars in their capital fund balance. Hundred and eight thousand of that is in the capital improvement plan balance and hundred and twenty is in the capital non-recurring balance. Most of these funds resulted from previous capital projects that were completed at less than what we had in, had budgeted for. And a significant amount of this was representing projects, field projects, athletic field projects that were put on hold when the board decided to go to referendum for the turf field. So that is capital funds that are are currently available for the board to use. The two percent carryover from twenty twenty-one of the audited surplus equates to six hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. The forty thousand that I mentioned, the previous slide, that's the money above and beyond, which which has to go back to the towns. Now, obviously, the board has some decisions to make. And as I indicated, their work is is not done on this. So in terms of of, you know, the, the options that I've provided to the board is for the proposed capital budget that the five hundred and four thousand that that I proposed and the existing capital funds. There are a number of things that they could certainly do with that. They could fund some of the capital projects in my proposed budget with the existing capital accounts they have to reduce the capital budget. They could fund, fully fund my proposed capital budget and decide to fund additional capital projects that I did not include in my proposal. They could also use that, that is particularly the two hundred thousand that they have in their capital accounts. They could use that to fund some of the necessary athletic field repairs. In terms of the audited surplus, I think as, as most of you probably know, that that money cannot be used to supplement our operating budget. It really can only be used either to return to the towns or to fund capital projects. So I think the options that the board has for that are to fund the necessary field repairs. They could create a capital non-recurring line item to offset future bonding that we know is coming down the pike. So I I would anticipate that when the current bonding expires, the board's going to be at the point where they're at least going to need to be considering projects for the roof replacement, the boilers and chiller replacements. That's still five to seven years off, but nonetheless, you know, that that they could use some of that money if they chose to, to begin to create a savings account for that. And they could certainly return money to the three towns as well. So the board. And they could certainly return money to the three towns as well. So the board hasn't had that discussion yet, but that's, you know, obviously a discussion they're gonna have to have between now and that April 4th date. And then just to take an overview of the increases and decreases of the RAM budget over the last six years. You can see the, you know, the height of an increase of 2.89% and this year's decrease of a negative point six seven percent. And that brings my presentation to an end. Eve and I are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks Scott. Board of Finance members, I'll open it up if anybody has any questions they haven't asked already. Fairly clearly presented. I mean, there may be more questions during the follow-up meetings of the RAM. Anybody? Okay, hearing none? Okay, well, that's fine for now. Thank you for your presentation.
And anyone's welcome to email us questions or, you know, the Ram board is meeting again on March 21st. That's the next board meeting. So any questions or comments before then, certainly we'll be happy to share.
I just wanted to thank Scott for coming. I know your schedule's been really busy. It'll take a little time to digest it all. Clearly, all I was gonna say, and sorry, I was muting and unmuting is, you know, you'd hope with significant enrollment decreases that we could see, you know, a tangible decrease eventually in one of these budgets and understanding that there's always capital improvements and wish lists and things to get done and things that have to get done. So, you know, just trying to digest it all and study it a little bit more. Have your other, you know, forums been asking similar things? I don't want to keep you longer. You do this all the time, but I imagine the other towns kind of ask the same thing, when, when we're gonna see a significant decrease.
Absolutely. Yes, yeah. Yes. And I would hope, and it's easy for me to say this, because this will be the last budget I'll be doing, but, but our hope is that by setting some of those items at a fixed rate, when we do reduce staff, those will be real reductions, you know, financial reductions to the budget. So that we're, you know, I would be hopeful that this budget would just be the beginning, but that we'd be able to experience some reductions. I think what the biggest challenge I think the Ram board has right now is is that long-term planning for how do we maintain programming in the face of decreasing enrollment? And what does that look like? You know, I would, I would certainly love, you know, I have a hand in just about every program that Ram offers now. So certainly I have, would love to see them all continue and flourish, but you know, even over the last few years, we have seen the loss of some programming, partly due to lack of student interest, partly due to changes in where students are going and what their interest is in the classes they're choosing. But, you know, I think for the Ram board, that's probably gonna be the, the number one challenge that they're gonna have over the next year or two, as they plan their budgets with decreasing enrollment. You know, how do you manage your staff while being able to preserve as many programs as possible? And because certainly the communities are gonna wanna see, I think you're right, Juan, they're gonna wanna see a real reduction as the number of students, you know, reduces as well.
Still keep the quality. And then one final question, as I was looking at my notes, sorry, just the academic labs that the teachers, you know, you do, that's a great idea, of course, and needed. And just for the, from the teacher perspective, and this is just a small part of it, do they, would that have been during one of, that is their duty?
Correct.
And they get a stipend for it? So they still teach their same number of classes that they're contracted to?
Exactly. Yeah. Yep. So we have, we have an eight-period day. So a teacher teaches five classes. They have one preparation period, they have one duty, and then they have lunch. The and actually their lunch is, you know, they used to be traditionally a 20-minute lunch for teachers. Now they have a full period for lunch, but what that allows us to do is they have, you know, 20 minutes to eat, but then the rest of that period is available for student support. And so students can go to them during their lunch periods and get help. Or the teachers have an opportunity to collaborate with their colleagues, you know, if they're co-teaching a class or teaching the same subject area, they can do some collaboration during that time. But the, the academic labs are unique in that they involve planning, they involve, you know, a much higher degree of engagement than monitoring a study hall or something along those lines.
Thank you.
Eric Shevchenko here. I would like to just extend to Eric Anderson, my wishes for a rapid and complete recovery. He's a valuable asset to the town of Andover and I wish him the very best. Also, I see two very familiar names out there. There's, there's Linda Fish and Robert England, both of which I served with on Board of Finance a number of years ago. My hat is off to you that you are still hanging in there. And also I would like to just extend my thanks to Amanda Gibson, who has helped me out when I have stopped in at the town hall. So thank you guys all very much. And of course, thanks to the, the balance of the members of the Andover Board of Finance.
Good to see Eric. All right. Well, again, thank you for your presentation and support tonight, guys. We appreciate it and good luck with the remainder of the budget season.
Great.
We all need.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate it. Good luck as well.
You have a good night.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Eva.
Okay. Being done with the presentation on the Region 8 Board of Ed budget takes us back to our normal agenda for this time of year, which is the budget workshop for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. So we, we went through it pretty good detail last time without going line by line. We asked some questions. I think we got some answers. Eric had provided some stuff also. We had gotten the the cross-reference also from Sherry. So I think we've got some of that. I don't particularly have any method of how to proceed, or if we need to proceed or take this much further. We, we obviously have a presentation next week for the Andover Board of Ed budget, which I think is obviously something that's much more topical and actionable on our part. It's, it's a part of our town budget that we affect and will have to act on at that point. I did see some good back and forth about how to capture input from, from the, the public. We do have that. I think Amanda pointed out, we do have that that budget email address. I think having that up in effect is, is good. There was some discussion about who should monitor and access it. I mean, personally, I, I wouldn't want to have to be responsible for for accessing it. And I want to, I think personally, I think it probably makes sense to have one or two people monitor and control it. Otherwise, there's too, too much chance of something getting lost or you know, misfiled or deleted accidentally or anything like that. I don't know how likely that is. But I personally would like to see a collation of any input provided through that or more traditional correspondences, you know, just in advance of, of the meetings. I don't know if that's something that Amanda could put together, if it's not you know, tons of work, but you know, something like that in a day or so before the meeting starts, I think would be, would be valuable for those board members who are not gonna monitor it online. And I personally don't really have the time to keep on top of it in that way. But you know, kind of seeing a running, a running list or else having an email to us forwarded, you know, compiled into a document, I think would be helpful. Anybody have any input on that or other ideas?
I think we should also advertise out to the public where this is going to be housed and all that. I have quite a few people asking me questions. And I'm saying, okay, that's, that's what kind of prompted me to check into it. So if we can put that way, as soon as we decide, that's what we're gonna do, if we can advertise that so people have that avenue of questions they can answer, they can ask.
So by advertising, Louise, you've been thinking like the, you know, the town Facebook account, Eric's email distribution or something like that?
Yeah, also maybe in the paper as well.
That costs money, but certainly unless we can get an article written, which is free.
I think we can do it as a press release and get it without paying.
Is there a way to make a, you know, on the the main town website page, is there a place for us to put an announcement, you know, to bring easier time, so you don't have to go find the budget page to find it? Do you know what I mean? Can we have a a highlight or something saying, you know, budget questions, make sure you go here and put a link?
Idea. I just wanna jump in. We do have it listed under news and announcements. There's three headers, so it's there, but we can make it more specific to include, you know, the email and, you know, there's also the, the red alert message on the top if you wanna go big and, and put it right in people's faces.
That might be a little much.
That's what I was gonna say.
Maybe better to retain that for unexpected closures or something like that.
I was just gonna say that I don't think we need a press release, maybe just have it there for people that are interested in constantly looking for budget information on the budget page like I used to do or things. Yeah, I don't think we need to send it out, but if people are interested, they're gonna look for it on the webpage, you know, which is the natural place to look on the website and then just have, if you have any questions, boom, you know, something like that, maybe Amanda would be good. I mean, that's my thought, if Mark and whoever agrees.
Just think as long as it's easily found. So somebody goes.
I mean, I think I know what John is trying to say here. It's just so that it is for a casual user who goes to the website, who isn't maybe necessarily familiar with drilling down into the submenus and whatever, that there's a really easy pathway to it, because that then helps people who, you know, may be coming in for the first time or whatever to look at this stuff. It helps them out. I'm generally in favor of trying to increase people's participation. So I'm, I'm on board with that. But I mean, I do think that things the way they are, I'm not even, they're not gonna criticize at all. I think that, that if you are, if you go to the town webpage and you are intending to search for budget stuff, you can pretty easily find it. But I have no objection to trying to make that even easier and easy is good. I mean, I also note that, you know, thus far, we've had very little public engagement with this budget process. It's early yet. But our meetings are out there and, you know, you, our public comment tonight was literally the people from Ram, so you know, there's only so much you can do.
I think they're gonna come when they're ready, so it's.
Yeah, it is early. Don't get me wrong. I mean, usually things, you know, as this process goes along, we'll maybe see some more.
I'm gonna suggest that we empower Amanda to find a, make a selection, maybe working if Eric wants to, you know, work with that to provide some guidance and just find a way to make that as, as successful as possible without, you know, without using the Go Big red banner at the top. Come up with some way to just make it. Are you guys okay with that? You wanna make it explicit how we think we'd ought to go? I mean, I don't have any specific things, but I do think some kind of link from the, from the front page would be, would be value, something that says, you know, boom, provide your input here or something.
Yeah, I mean, right now it is. The proposed budget is sitting right at the top of the screen to anybody that, you know, under current news. I mean, we can change the message if you want something. I don't know.
Well, I think we're talking about a way to provide input, right? So specifically, where would it, somebody to go if they wanted to provide some written input to the budget?
Right, right. So I guess my question is, do you want that under, on the front page? Or do you want them to drill down to a budget page, which is what there is now? And then have, you know, I don't know, a banner here saying, you know, we'd have to look back at what we've done in years past when we had a budget message there.
I'd be okay with having it on the budget page, as, as long as it's, there's a lot on here, which is great. But I would say it should probably be in that header, you know, up there to say, you know, you know, stay up to date. That's great. And maybe we, you know, we even have a link right below that or something that says, you know, provide your, you know, input, questions about the budget.
Feedback here. My, my question. What, my question is, if memory serves, and unfortunately my memory is shockingly fuzzy, but during the height of the pandemic, you know, we definitely had people submitting commentary online, because everything was online, right? And we couldn't do meetings and people weren't even able to go to the town hall and whatnot. And can you remind me how we facilitated that?
Basically, that's what we talked about. You know, we put something prominent on the budget page saying, hey, for feedback on the budget, you know, please click here. That leads you to the, you know, budget@andoverct.com email address. And then, you know, we kind of go from there. And I, I think that's, that's fine. That's gives people a good way you know, to provide that information.
Yeah, that works for me. It worked, I think it worked well, honestly. So.
Yeah, we just have a simple banner that says, click here to ask questions about the budget or provide feedback about the budget or something. Just some, just simple like that.
Well, the only thing I, I wouldn't say to ask questions, because if you say to ask questions, then somebody has to, you know, respond to all of those and provide them the information.
It's a good point, and it may not be sufficient or expected that, you know, if we respond to it in a the Board of Finance meeting, that may not be what they expect and they, then kind of experiences that they didn't get the answer to the question.
Right. I think, yeah, feedback might be the better word to use.
Now, the last couple of years as the administrator, I have on the town's Facebook page, you know, basically, you know, asked for budget questions and answered what I could there. Also, at some point during the budget process, I'm not sure we're there yet, because I think you guys haven't had enough of a crack at changing the budget for that to be be, in other words, I don't think we're developed enough to be asked to be doing that yet, but I would do that at some point.
I, I agree. I mean, this is still pretty preliminary. We're still getting our presentations in from the various, you know, we've gotten the town stuff, we've gotten RAM, we're gonna get AES, which is a major component, obviously. And then we have to, we're gonna do our line by line at some point. And I think after that cut is when it makes sense. You guys agree? Do you think that makes sense?
I do. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, because I mean, the budget as it stands now really doesn't have any, we haven't taken any action as of yet. Right? It's just compiling what others have given us.
We're in the gathering the information phase, right?
Right. Exactly right.
I was just gonna add that I loved as a, you know, a towns person just checking that. I think like you all were talking about, it was just a running commentary of questions, right? Different things. I don't know.
I actually don't remember how we did it the last time.
It was an Excel sheet and there was just, you know, the questions.
And I think we just
I think we kind of categorized them and addressed them broadly. Like, I don't know that we did a.
I don't think there was answers.
It was more like, you know, broad categories of, all right, a bunch of people asked a question about this. We're gonna kind of address that realistically.
It was definitely later than now. So, yeah.
Oh, agreed. I think it was. Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I add something? I think it's also important to add it to whatever articles are gonna be publicized. I think it's also important to add it to whatever articles are going to be publicized in the paper, just at the bottom saying, you know, any feedback, any feedback, just direct it to such and such. So those people that don't normally go online, they will still, they will still see it in the paper.
Yeah.
Good reminder. I agree.
So I just have one other thing I wanted to say, and that one of the questions you all had for me was why did between the department proposed budget and what the Board of Selectment approved, there was the Public Works like equipment maintenance line item, there was a $30,000 difference. And that was due to the original, the Public Works foreman had suggested two things he thought would be appropriate to do this year that he felt were appropriate under maintenance. One was replace the direct main drive belt on the sweeper. That's about a $10,000 repair. And the second one was replace the flail head for the mower. Since it doesn't look like we're gonna buy a new mower anytime soon, we have two old flail heads. We have one rough flail head and we have one kind of finish flail head. And the finished flail head, which is the one we use like 90% of the time, is really, it's gonna need to be replaced. Now, the Board of Selectment did feel those were more appropriate as capital expenses rather than maintenance expenses and took them out of that line item of the budget, which Diane was, as you pointed out, $30,000 difference, and that's what, what that change was.
Did that get added to the capital request?
It did not.
So, so that came out. Is that the sweeper?
And I would also.
We just bought last fall?
Yeah, except remember, we bought a used one.
Yeah, used, right?
Right, and we did a bunch of repairs to it, but we knew the main drive belt, we knew we could get a year or two out of it, but, but that was going to be, we just didn't want to do it last year because that's a fairly big ticket item.
Eric, is this the, the piece of machinery that we got like a really good deal on, like we went down to like Virginia or something and grabbed it? Was that, was that this?
Exactly. We bought it for about a third of its retail value.
Right. So at the end of the day, you're gonna put a little more maintenance to do by the nature of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Saved a ton of money upfront buying that.
Right. Yep. Right.
So does that mean, I guess I'm gonna ask the question, that you feel what we have, what is currently in the budget request for capital expense is sufficient to cover those repairs if we need to do them this year?
Um, maybe. And the reason I say maybe is because I don't know that we're going to be able to get the Skid steer this year anyway. Because if we're not ordering it right now and we're waiting till the July budget year, we're not getting it, you know, we're not getting it till the next time they open up orders, you know, which may be, you know, maybe sometime early about this time next year. So, you know, we're not, we're not even going to be able to order it this year.
I just want to make sure that if we know they have to be replaced in this budget cycle, that we make accommodations for that somewhere.
Well, the flail head doesn't absolutely have to be replaced right now. You know, it's part of, part of the question is just, you know, either we're going to replace the bearings in it again and repair the existing one and live it along a little bit longer, or we're gonna replace it. But what I would say is we know it's not gonna last the length of time between now and when we replace the whole tractor and mower and, you know, so we know we're gonna end up buying one at some point over the life of that piece of equipment, whether we buy it this year or next year or two years down the road. But it doesn't necessarily mean we have to buy it this year. You know, but if we don't buy it this year, we're gonna spend some money fixing up the existing. So, but what I would rather do is I would rather have the Public Works foreman talk to you directly about that because he's got a better feel for, you know, their, their day-to-day equipment needs than I do. And I think he can better answer your questions than I can.
I just feel like however we come out of this year, the budget may be very tight this year. And I don't want to halfway through next budget year trying to find money somewhere because something needs to be done and we didn't account for it. If it does, if it's like an urgent need, we should plan it in the budget. If it's not, then you've got more wiggle room to.
Yep. You're on mute, Mark.
Thank you. Any other questions for Eric or Eric, do you have anything else for the board? Joanne?
I was just curious if Sherry's had a chance to work on the whole personnel document that we were asking about, unless I missed it in an email today. I checked.
Oh. Um, as far as I know, I have not seen an updated version of that. Yep.
So hopefully next week, maybe.
Yeah, I, I think she was thinking she had a little bit of a break since the focus of this meeting and the next meeting was this plus AES. So I know she's been working on a bunch of other stuff right now. We do have, the auditor is, we did do a, one more extension with the auditor. They are having their personnel that are going to be, wow, we have to because it's the ninth. So if we had, the state would be on our case already because we obviously didn't get the audit completed by March 1st. So they are gonna have their personnel on site supposedly this coming week.
My question too is just so I understand. Is the reason the audit is late because they have a lack of resources on their side, the auditing firm? And we got them all the information they needed in a timely manner and they just haven't done anything with it? Or were they waiting on us a little bit and it's a combination of the two things? I just want to know why it's this far down.
They were waiting on us initially, but we had them the information they needed, you know, in the September, you know, timeframe. You know, to be perfectly honest, in previous years, they haven't even started thinking about our audit, you know, till after January 1st. This was the first year and we kind of got led into this thinking that we were gonna get it done on time because they actually started working on it in like September and October, which has never happened to us before.
But they wanted to get it back on track, so I was looking forward to this year kind of being a normalized year.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think we know we're at the end of their pecking list. You know, and, you know, I'm, we had certainly.
I did some research on this, what other towns are paying for their audits? And we're paying them for this, our size town, we're paying them a good chunk of change.
If memory serves, the last couple of times we've bid this out or we've sought out bids for this, we're getting, we were getting a good deal. Nobody wanted to do our audit, basically.
Yeah, I think that was also, I'm, I'm sure for any audit, it's, you know, there's, the same work needs to be done, whether you're, you know.
Like you're little.
A thousand or a ton of 10, 10,000.
Unfortunately.
Certainly gonna be more work to do.
Most transactions they have to test. I mean, we don't have a huge amount of transactions.
All of it. I mean, we, we, we bid it, we used to get, you know, routinely we'd get three bids. And we actually would, if memory serves, and Eric, correct me if I'm misremembering this, but a couple of times, I, I feel like we even struggled to get a third bid. And we'd get wildly higher ones than the one that we ended up going. So I, I don't know that there's much to be saved there, unfortunately. I wish there was, but I don't.
I looked at Columbia and Bolton and they play the less than what we do for their audit.
Maybe we can figure that out, but.
So, um. You know.
That's probably a discussion for another day. But I, I think it is relevant to the performance aspect and I think Diane is getting that, so we just have to be, you know, aware of it.
I just want to make sure if it's, if we didn't get the information in a timely manner and scan stuff over to them like they needed, you know, in a timely fashion, that's one thing versus them not getting it done on time. Do I mean, and I'm okay with, you know, an extension, but going for another, I mean, I'm sure it's like goes a 30 days at a clip, so now we're another 30 days out. I really would like this audit put to bed for the actuals before we have to make a decision on this budget.
Yeah, so would we all, I mean.
We have to do something in April. I think we should be communicating that to them and saying, look, we really want to know the numbers in April.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, we're the client, I, you know.
I have no disagree with that. I completely agree with that part.
So, um, you know, just because we're the ugly stepchild doesn't mean we have to be treated that way.
Joanne?
Yeah, just to follow up with my question, so I understand Eric with Sherry, you know, whatever, she's busy. The only, the only reason kind of what you said is having the information so that as we get to these meetings and if we have things we can discuss or questions to ask, they might come up then. So I understand she has a lot on her plate, so as things filter in or as the things we request, you know, because I can't always cram a little bit right before the meeting, so I kind of stagger out my looking, yeah, that's all. So just a reminder that when she can, that or whatever else we're waiting on. Thank you.
I spent some time putting together a spreadsheet for myself because I have all these pieces of information that I want to look at. And then I have all these questions that I want to ask and I'm starting to create that because I can't remember anything anymore. So if it's easier to exchange information back and forth, I'm willing to keep this spreadsheet up and put the information in there, you know, what we want, this is what we're looking for. So it's not going back in pieces of email all over the place, which is really hard to keep track of. So if we want to do something like that, I'd be willing to keep that up and send that back and forth if everybody wants to do that.
Yeah, that, that would be fine from our perspective. I mean, anything you can give us in writing as to exactly what information you want. I mean, you did that, you told me verbally last meeting and I tried to supply the information that you requested, which was, you know, budgets, the broken down budgets from Public Works, and there were a couple of other things that you had requested. And as far as I know, from my end of things, I gave you what it was you were asking for, had questions about. There was some.
I've added some stuff to listen. There are more Sherry stuff, I think, because I'm interested in all those standalone funds that we have from last year and this 50th year, what we spent out of those, what went in there, what we spent. And, you know, so we have some track record on that stuff. And getting that information put together, so I have that on the list. So I can, I can do that and make sure I copy everybody on that if that works for everybody. Or if you want to, we can review it in these meetings and we can add to it and then it can be a takeaway document, whatever you guys want to do.
Wouldn't be bad to have other comments or questions? Stuff we should talk about today. I know we're still, again, as you mentioned, in the information gathering stage, but.
We've got AES next week, right?
Yes, yeah, same basic format. We'll have the presentation from Val first and then follow that with the discussion.
Right.
I have one more question if I could.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry for the jumping around here. I just figured I'd, um, let me, I, I was curious if this is along the personnel lines too and nothing, nothing to do or whatever. I know we have, when people are hired in the town, they receive a hire letter.
Yes.
Is that a standard procedure? Everybody that's hired gets a hire letter?
Yeah, since I've been here, yes.
I was just curious.
Yep.
Do those kind of things at my job too, and I, I mean, I know that we have so many less employees in Andover, so I was curious on that. Thank you.
Yep, which is not me saying we do a great job of HR because we often don't. I mean, you know, we don't have any kind of HR department, so, you know, it kind of randomly falls on myself and Marina and, you know, Sherry to do it.
No, understood, yeah. I just wondered, I know, like, that's just a standard thing, so I was hopeful that we did that in town, that when people are hired, they just get a hire letter and they have a file and all that, so. That's it, just a little, little thing. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we maintain a personnel file on every employee and the offer letter does go in there. And the offer letter is what kickstarts, you know, because the offer letter identifies, you know, basically working conditions, so hourly wage, you know, and number of hours worked in, in those conditions.
That's what I thought. Alrighty, thank you for that.
Yep.
I don't know if we're not gonna talk about the budget anymore in detail and would have more questions, so I would suggest we move on to the next agenda item. Uh, next item is correspondence. We actually did have a couple of things that, that came in. I did forward to you Scott's presentation, which you received this morning. There was also a letter from the Board of Education, which I forwarded to everybody. We could probably attach that here, not sure, we need to kind of go through that. Just kind of reviews the budget. Asking a question at the end, please let us know when we'll be on the agenda for the Board of Finance meeting if you would like to be able to present not only the document, but it be available for any, you know, questions. That, I think it's been answered to this kind of concurrently with the request for them to participate in the meeting. Amanda had already coordinated that. And Amanda, I believe you said you'd already advised Valerie that they would be first on the, on the agenda, so, similar as today. So I think you guys all have that.
Yes, that's all set.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have any other correspondence to report? Okay, hearing none, I guess we'll move on again to public speak.
Okay, so I believe the only person we have on here is Bill from the public. Bill, would you like to participate in public speak?
They're muted a few, if you are, but.
All right.
Well, I guess we'll go ahead and move on then, you know, hearing none. I guess that's it for tonight then, really short one. We'll have some long ones coming up, I'm sure. Thank you, everybody, for participation. Anybody who'd like to make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
And with some motions to adjourn the meeting. Joanne, seconds, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Amanda. Thank you, board.
Thanks all.
See you next week.